Okay, this is our official oath. Please raise your right hand. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Alderman.
Having been elected.
Having been elected.
To the office of Alder Person Ward, state your ward.
To the office of Alder Person Ward.
In the city of Belleville?
City of Belleville.
In the county of St. Clair and state of Illinois.
County of St. Clair and state of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of Alder Person Ward, state your ward.
The duties of Alder Person Ward.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. I will take that from you and that.
And so.
Chris Alderman-Rothwell, would you turn on that microphone for me, please?
On.
Yeah. Can you hit yours? Okay, mayor, we are ready to go. Sounds good to me.
If everybody could be seated, I'd like to call this meeting to order of Monday, May 1st, 2023, at 7:00 in the council chambers. First of all, I want to welcome and congratulate our aldermen, and I'd like to welcome our new aldermen. And so, well, kind of one that's been here before, but now back.
Different ward.
So anyway, I'm just very grateful that we are at this point and have everything running really well, and I think we're all going to work together as a team. That's kind of what we've been doing, and it seems to have been working. This, in fact, this is my anniversary of being the mayor for two years. So I just want to thank you all, everyone in the audience, and everyone here tonight that's willing to serve the city of Belleville. So once again, let's give a big round of applause. Okay, so I'll call this meeting to order, and of course, we all know that if we would have a tornado, we would be down in the basement, going out by Sarah Beerman's sewer department and going straight down the steps, and if it would be another disaster, like a fire, we would definitely go out here, would be our place to go, all of us. So with that, I'd like to remind you that the meetings are being videotaped, so it's important that everyone speak into your microphone when you're speaking, and so people that are watching it on YouTube can hear what you all have to say. So now we'll start, Jenny, roll call of aldermen.
Alder Person Whitaker.
Here.
Alder Person Schneider.
Here.
Alder Person Duco.
Here.
Alder Person Aris.
Here.
Alder Person Randall.
Here.
Alder Person Ferguson.
Here.
Alder Person Anthony.
Here.
Alder Person Ovian.
Here.
Alder Person Dittelman.
Here.
Alder Person Schaefer.
Here.
Alder Person Steele. Alder Person Rothweiler.
Here.
Alder Person Elmore.
Here.
Alder Person Weigant.
Here.
Alder Person Sullivan.
Here.
Alder Person Ostoff.
Here.
Alder Person Steele is excused, mayor.
Okay, thank you, and let's do department heads now.
City Treasurer Beerman.
President.
City Attorney Horner.
President.
Police Chief Icekant.
Here.
Fire Chief Stinson.
Here.
Finance Director Jamie Maitre.
Here.
Director of Public Works Jason Poole.
Here.
Director of Wastewater Randy Smith.
Here.
Director of Library Leander Spearman.
Here.
Director of IT Eric Walls.
Here.
City Engineer Sal Elcott.
Here.
Director of Health Housing Building Scott Tyler.
Director of Economic Development Planning Zoning Cliff Cross.
Here.
Director of Human Resources Bill Clay. Director of Communications and PR Kathy Kaiser.
Here.
Clay and Tyler, excuse me, mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, no public hearings this evening. So we will have public participation, two to three minutes. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward and speak during public participation?
Hi, my name is Catherine Crayer. I'm a former alderman in Ward Aide. I just want to congratulate all of the newly elected aldermen, all of the reelected aldermen, and I want to thank you all for the good job that you do.
Thank you very much. Very kind, thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, so we will start with presentations, recognitions, and appointments. Well, our word of the month is self-discipline, meaning think about your words and actions and then making choices that are right. So we've all had times when we've probably have not used self-discipline, and then we sat back and thought, hmm, big mistake. So let's try to remember to do that, not just kids, but adults also. I would like to note that Congress designated May as a National Military Appreciation Month in 1999 to ensure the nation was given the opportunity to publicly demonstrate their appreciation for their sacrifices and successes made by our service members, past and present. I'd also like to let everybody know that the, I'm the honorary wing commander of the 9/32, and when they come in every month, we have a snack attack because they bring in from, you know, various states nearby and everything. So Kathy Kaiser, our communication director, she gets the opportunity to go and dump it off there at 7:00 on Saturday morning. So anyway, but we have really had some really great snacks, so if you are interested in bringing snacks, the Lincoln always gives us a lot of popcorn, and, but they so appreciate it. In fact, I guess it was about a month, month ago, we were at a dinner at Scott, and the general actually recognized the city of Belleville for their snack attacks that they do for the 9/32. So if you have an opportunity to, we will be delivering this weekend. Yeah, this weekend, and it's also the Scott Air Force Base Air Show that's going to be quite remarkable. So anybody that wants to drop off snacks, don't drop in my office, I'll eat them, but let's go ahead and see how many we can get here at City Hall, and we'll make sure they get out to the right people. Okay, I'm asking to read together 7C, 7D, and 7E.
Schaefer, some move. If there's no objections, there's no motion. Are you guys okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Go for it, mayor.
So this is the City Council Committee Appointments for the Fiscal Year 2023-2024 as amended for the Library Board. And then motion to approve the appointment of Bill Steele as a licensed attorney to serve as the hearing officer for the crime-free housing, and motion to approve the appointment of Mike Heisler to serve a one-year term on the Historic Preservation Committee.
Schaefer, some move.
Aris, second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, let's have roll call.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Aris.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Ostoff.
Aye.
Motion carries, mayor.
Okay, thank you. Now approval of minutes. I need a motion to approve the City Council meeting minutes and executive session minutes from April 17th, 2023. Second?
Schaefer.
Okay, so Lillian and Shelley.
Shelley, I got it.
Okay. Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. In claims, payrolls, and disbursements, I need a motion to approve claims and disbursements in the amount of $2,612,450.87, and payroll in the amount of $960,875.54.
What if you're some of, one second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, roll call.
Schneider.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Aris.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Ostoff.
Aye.
Motion carries, mayor.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we'll go to oral reports from standing committees, special committees, and any other oral reports from the elected officials or staff. So let's start with our finance committee, Alder Person Whitaker.
On behalf of Finance, I'll make a motion to approve the disposal of surplus property for Southwest Illinois Justice and Workforce Development Campus.
Schaefer, a second.
Okay, any discussion? I believe they were sent out for people to look at, and we didn't get any request for that anybody wanted it. We do have one request from Joe Hubbard for Catholic open programs, so. Do we have?
We have a motion and a second, mayor.
Motion and any more discussion? Roll call.
Duco.
Aye.
Aris.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Ostoff.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Motion carries, mayor.
Thank you. Now motions from Streets and Grades, Alder Person Randall.
Thank you, mayor. On behalf of Streets and Grades, is it okay if I read these together, folks?
Yes.
Well, I appreciate that. All right. 11B1, a motion to approve a joint funding agreement for state-led construction work in the amount of $570,773.70 for resurfacing and work on Levin and Avenue, this is TIF and motor fuel tax. 11B2, motion to approve Hank's Escavating and Landscaping Incorporated as the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of $439,730.60 for improvements to North Charles and Dewey Street, TIF 12 funds. 11B3, motion to approve DMS Contracting, Inc. as lowest responsible bidder in the amount of $292,020 for 2023-2024 roadway oil and chip program, motor fuel tax. 11B4, motion to approve Hank's Escavating and Landscaping Incorporated as the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of $197,950 for the 2023-2024 ditching program, motor fuel tax. 11B5, a motion to approve an agreement with Oats Associates in the amount of $139,900 for improvements to South Church Street from South Belt East to Garfield Street, CDBG and ARPA funds. 11B6, motion to approve agreement with Lock Miller Group LLC in the amount of $126,000 for improvements on Main Street from Sixth Street to just east of Oak Street, West A Street from Third Street to Illinois Street, Third Street from Main Street to A Street, First Street from Main Street to A Street, Illinois Street from Washington Street to A Street, this is all ARPA funds. 11B7, a motion to approve an agreement with Lock Miller Group in the amount of $32,781.10 for construction inspection for North Charles Street and Dewey Street, TIF 12 funds. And 11B8, a motion to approve an agreement with Oats Associates in the amount of $29,900 for the preparation of engineering documents for the resurfacing of Susan Court from South Park Drive to North Park Drive, CDBG and ARPA funding, some move.
Schaefer, second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Aris.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Ostoff.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Motion carries, mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, motion from administration, Jenny, would you like to read?
Yeah. Do you, do you guys want these separated out?
No, I want number 11C2 to be separated.
Okay, but I can, one and three, I can read together, everybody's good? Okay. 11C1, motion to amend a resolution authorizing the execution of a joint agreement with St. Clair County, Illinois, Frank Scott Parkway, and North Belt West for an increase in funding in the amount of $5,000. 11C3, motion to clarify and correct use variance ordinance 7975-2016 to identify applicant as Ron and Michelle Centerfield Tavern LLC. Aris, some move.
Schaefer, second. Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Ostoff.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Aris.
Aye.
Motion carries, mayor.
Okay.
11C2, motion to extend the special use permit to establish and operate an adult-use cannabis dispensing organization in regards to case number 20, April 22, Blonsen Moore Holdings LLC, 7300 Twin Pyramid Parkway, 07130107002, until December 1st, 2023. Schaefer, some move.
Aris, second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Rafi, this was the one you wanted to read separate?
This one's the roll call. The roll call.
This is the one that I cannot accept, I will go.
Okay.
That's fine. You just want it on roll call.
Yeah.
I get it.
Got it. Okay, so let's take roll call.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
No.
Dendelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Weigant?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Eris?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor, 14 to 1.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Memorial Day Ceremony and Communications, we've got quite a few here.
Could we read them all together?
Aye.
Yes.
Gladly, yes. 12A, Memorial Day Ceremony, 5/29/2023, request from Bellevue Memorial Day Association to host the Memorial Day Ceremony, Monday, May 29th, 2023, 11:00 AM to 12:00 PM at Walnut Hill Cemetery, city services requested, tents, chairs, flagpoles. 12B, Cinco de Mayo, 5/5/2023 and 5/6/2023, request from El Gordito to host Cinco de Mayo, Friday, May 5th, 2023, and Saturday, May 6th, 2023, 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM, armed parking lot in grassy area, music 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM, no city services. 12C, Cinco de Mayo, 5/5/2023 and 5/6/2023, request from Casa Maria to host Cinco de Mayo, Friday, May 5th and Saturday, May 6th, 2023, 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM with music, use of city parking lot for tent, 8:00 AM Friday, May 5th through 12:00 PM Sunday, May 7th, at corner of North High and East A Street, additional requests, no parking signage and barricades. 12D, Patterborne Square Dedication, 7/15/2023, request from Bellevue Sister Cities to change the date of the Patterborne Square dedication to Saturday, July 15th, 2023.
Okay.
Eris, so moved.
Schaefer, second.
Thank you, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries.
Yep. Okay, under resolutions. Oh, we have no petitions this evening, so I'm going on to resolutions. Okay, motion to read by title only, Resolution 3478, 3479, and 3480?
Randall, so moved.
Schaefer, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Jenny?
I assume I can read them together then, too, right?
No, no, wait. 15B, I want you to go ahead and separate.
I will when we get to ordinances.
Okay.
Okay. 14A, Resolution 3478, resolution requesting permission from IDOT to close Route 159 for Veterans Day Ceremony, Saturday, November 11th, 2023. 14B, Resolution 3479, a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code in the amount of $570,773.70 for Lebanon Avenue. 14C, Resolution 3480, a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code in the amount of $55,000 for Frank Scott Parkway and North Belt West.
Eris, so moved.
Okay, Schaefer, second. Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dendelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Weigant?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Eris?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And under ordinances, I need a motion to read by title only, ordinances 9148, 9149, and 9150. Second?
Whitaker.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, wait, I said, forgot discussion, discussion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So I'll do 15A and 15C together.
Okay, thank you.
15A, ordinance 9148, 2023, and ordinance authorizing sale and conversion of personal property, furniture and equipment at S.I.J.W.D.C., 2300 West Main Street. And 15C, ordinance 9150, 2023, a zoning ordinance in regards to case number 26, July 16, Ronald Bartlett and Michelle Schiffer Decker, Ronan Michelle Centerfield Tavern LLC.
Whitaker, so moved.
Schaefer, second. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Ovian?
On number B, I asked to go ahead and...
I didn't read B.
Oh, you didn't?
I just did A and C.
I stand by.
I'll do B in a minute.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Ovian?
Aye.
Dendelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Weigant?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Eris?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you.
15B, ordinance 9149, 2023, a zoning ordinance in regards to case number 20, April 22, Blonson More Holdings LLC.
Anthony, so moved.
Schaefer, second.
Okay, any discussion? Do you have a discussion?
No, he just wants it on.
Oh, he wants on record. Okay, got it.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's have roll call.
Dendelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Weigant?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Eris?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
No.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Okay, we have no unfinished business tonight. Under miscellaneous and new business, I need a motion to approve motor fuel claims in the amount of $9,947, I mean, $945.17.
Randall, so moved.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Schaefer?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Weigant?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Eris?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dendelman?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Now we need a motion to go into executive session to discuss collective negotiation matters, 5ILCS 120/2C2 and personnel litigation, workers' compensation, property acquisition, transfer of property, 5ILC 120/2C.
Randall, so moved. Whitaker, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
All opposed.
Okay, motion carries. We'll go into executive session.
There was some kids that were riding by on the skateboard.
Too much stuff over here.
Okay, I need, is everybody back?
I think so.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, could I make a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
I'll second it.
Excellent. Excellent. Okay. Thank you all for being here tonight.
Discussion, all in favor?
Oh, wait, you need discussion. Anybody not want to adjourn? Okay. Hearing no discussion? We adjourn.
No, one is from Tom Holbrooke. That other one is yours, just a half.